No, it doesn't. Did you research this company?
I am familiar with what this is.
See, you have a little bit more insight into it than me.
I think if you think about it, you are familiar with it as well.
See what it says?
We are recording, so if you want to go ahead, you can fix the rest and project the agenda.
I'm familiar with this project. This is what I don't like here.
Welcome, everyone. Welcome to the Scott Township Planning Commission. Today's date is June 27, 2023. We call to order this meeting. If you'd like an agenda, there should be some copies at the podium. You can go ahead and grab those. Planning Commissioners, are there any additions, suggestions, modifications to the agenda as distributed?
I'll approve the agenda as soon as.
Second.
You have support? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, the same sign. The agenda is approved. Are there any conflicts of interest that Planning Commissioners would like to declare at this time? None hearing none, we can move on. So we have two opportunities for general public comment. This is the first, so you can speak to agenda items or non-agenda items. But if you'd like to address the planning commission, you can come to the podium, state your name and address, and tell us what's on your mind. Anyone like to speak at this point? Seeing none, let's then move on. We have the minutes from June 13, 2023 to approve. Are there any changes to additions to those minutes?
Yes, it says in the attendance that Mr. Bliss was here, and he was not. We're going to pick on him.
I was here in spirit?
And then it says at the end, there was no report because he wasn't here. And then, of course, he wasn't here, so there is no report.
Did he come?
Then I was not here in spirit.
Alright, so we have a suggestion to modify the minutes. Are there anything else? So is there a motion to approve the minutes as amended?
As amended, I would support that. Or, excuse me, I would make that motion.
Okay, we have support.
Second.
Support, thank you. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the minutes are approved. I'm looking at our planning, our planning staff. Do you have any communications that you'd love to share? Joe, you want to...
I'm...
Is it Prince Andrew Cooper?
No.
Okay. So we have no old business at this time, so we're going to go right to new business. So the first item is preliminary discussion about the NJD development. We do have some information in our packet, but is this something that you want to introduce to...
I'd like to.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So as you might be aware, at the, I think, two meetings ago with the Board of Trustees, the Board was asked to support a project in its preliminary state called Project Forge that has involvement by the Michigan Economic Development Corporation as well as LEAP, Lansing Economic Area Partnership. I believe we have representatives of both of those groups here tonight. I see Jaclyn. We were asked to support the project. It is a large-scale industrial project that would be located in Bath. At this time, our understanding is it could create up to 200 jobs. It would be utilizing several of our utilities, and that's basically what we know at this time. As you can see here, you have a summary from our planner, Miles. Thank you. That is the letter we forwarded. And at this time, I think if Jaclyn or another representative would like to step to the podium, we certainly could have more details from them as they know them best.
That would be great. Yeah, someone like to speak here?
You're fine.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Brendan Fox. I'm with Dimaxian Development. So I'm here tonight to discuss the preliminary site plan and special use application you have before you. The contemplated site plan here is on the, located on the parcel just to the south of here, as you probably can tell. It is located in the southwest corner of the parcel, just to the north of the Greater Lansing Food Bank. We did this with the Township's master plan in mind, as this leaves plenty of room along both the Webster Road corridor as well as Drumheller Road for potential future commercial use, whether it's retail or other commercial use. Included in this site plan, you'll see the primary access drive is off of Food Court to the south. Additionally, while our user wishes to remain anonymous at this time, what I can tell you is that they are a global leader in clean manufacturing. They place a special emphasis on sustainability and are great stewards of the communities in which they're involved. As part of this, we've had initial conversations with local utilities and believe this project to be feasible. We've also provided them with information regarding the pretreatment of water that would be discharged into the sanitary to help supplement the environmental and sustainability initiatives of this company. While I may not be properly prepared, I would be happy to hear any questions that you may have at this time.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, so we do have limited information, and I know this is just preliminary, so we appreciate that. But let's open it up for any questions or comments from Commissioners.
Yeah. I guess, not knowing what I'm asking my question's about, it's going to be kind of nebulous, but in the preliminary drawings that I looked over, it says NJD Development. Do we get to know who that is? The only NJD development I came up with was in Egypt.
We're not disclosing the user at this time, as I wish to remain anonymous.
I see. What if we decided to remain anonymous? And it's listed as, quote, warehouse. And I ran a warehouse almost exactly that same size, and we had probably five times more, more loading docks than that. So I would have to assume this is going to be a manufacturing facility. Is that correct?
Yeah, there will be some manufacturing processes as well as warehousing that takes place. I believe it was included on the application, just a few of the processes that would take place, such as cold forging, annealing, and all of it using previously prepared materials.
Okay, well, that was a clue then, that Project Forge.
Yeah. Uh, nuts and bolts.
Would it be hot forging or cold forging? Do you know?
Uh, I'm not, I'm not sure.
I'm intimately familiar with forging, and I don't know if you know it or not, but a forge stamping out parts that was probably from here to the highway, you would feel it in your seat if you were sitting down. That's what this does. It's cold. Excuse me? It's cold.
It's cold.
Hey!
There you go.
Excellent. Okay, that helps. I mean, I grew up in North Lansing. There was a lot of forges, so anyway. Is there any other questions we can ask that maybe will get us a little bit... Come on.
No, I mean, that's up to you.
No, it sounds like it's up to you. I guess, that's about all I can say is, you know, with that kind of animosity, or animosity, anonymity, I don't know what else to say other than... That's it. I mean...
It's a little concerning to me that you said there had to be water pretreatment before it could be discharged to our system. So I assume that whatever they're doing is pretty toxic.
They're very well focused on being a clean manufacturing facility. They're actually very well recognized in their industry for basically contributing extremely low or to zero amounts of contaminants or chemicals into the water. So they're very... That is not a concern at this time.
Are there, are there standards or certifications of manufacturing that are relevant here that you've mentioned, could mention? You say that they're very clean manufactured. Usually, that means that they're binding by some standard or, right? Do you have that kind of information?
I believe that has been looked into, and all of their discharge is well below, you know, local and governmental requirements.
Can you tell us their EHS policy, though, without giving their names?
I'm not familiar with that.
Can you tell us where they presently discharge water at?
I cannot.
Can you ask us?
Does it have any facilities in America?
Uh, yes. They're located in, I believe, seven countries across the globe.
Egypt.
Egypt as well.
Southern countries, you can mean south of...
Other countries.
Other countries.
Seven countries.
Seven countries. Yeah. I, I can share with you when they've been at the table. SCUMA has also been at the table, our wastewater authority. They have no concerns at this time as to what would be released into the sanitary sewer system. They're familiar with the types of agents that would be released in the pretreatment process. I won't say there are no concerns, because I, I don't know that that's an opinion that's been shared, but there seem to be very little concerns at this time as to what would be released into the sanitary sewer system.
So this would require a special use permit?
Yes, it will.
A very special use permit.
A very special use permit.
I'm not sure where that section of our ordinance is. So can you tell us anything about the building itself? It might look like, I mean, I know what its use is, but is there anything, I guess, particularly noteworthy about the building itself?
Yeah, so it's a pre-engineered steel building. Insulated metal panel construction is currently anticipated. The, as you can see, the building is oriented kind of horizontal east and west. It's anticipated that the office of the building will be in what would be the, be the southeast corner of the building, you know, presenting with a nice facade facing towards the Webster Road corridor.
And how many, how many parking spots do you have there? I'm thinking about the number that Karen mentioned, the 200.
Let's walk on the other side.
Oh, I don't see it.
The provided spaces is 234, I believe.
Will this be a 24/7 operation?
Uh, it is not anticipated to be at this time.
It's, it was my understanding there would be two day shifts.
Two day shifts?
Yep. Yep, and we have looked into the potential traffic impacts potentially, and they are not thought to correspond with BSNA's traffic to have a negative impact on Webster Road.
Because they are, the, the major traffic times are not corresponding or overlapping, or just...
Correct.
The addition of it is not thought to be proper.
Correct. The major traffic times do not overlap.
Can you tell us what, why I feel like I'm on a guest... I'm on a show. Can you tell us, I hope you don't mind, sir?
Go ahead.
Is it automotive?
Uh, I don't think I can speak to that at this time.
You can speak to that. It is.
Okay.
I'll come up there with you.
Sure.
There's option rooms that fall, or two spaces that fall.
I'm Matt with Dimaxian Development, Matt McNeil.
What, what is the name of the development?
Dimaxian Development?
Dimax?
Yeah.
Dimaxian is the same group that did our development over the... recreational adult use and cafe and store.
Okay. I was just saying today.
Yep.
I didn't prep my... Excuse me, go ahead.
I'll, I'll try to answer your question more specifically. So they are a non-bolt manufacturer. Automotive is one of the industries that they do serve, but there are heavy industries as well that they serve, so larger nuts and bolts, larger fasteners, things like that.
So they have screw machines and things of that nature?
Um... They, it, it's primarily bolts, not screws.
I got a little more, a little more question.
We don't want to be as reserved either, but it's been requested, so.
We understand you totally, we can't say the A or N too much unless we know what's going on in our neighborhood.
Our primary focus, focus more than anything is, this is a fairly large building for the location. I mean, it's, you know, larger for sure than, than Food Bank building is, and we've spent a lot of time, with the limited time that we have, attempting to orient the building and place it on the site as, as best we feel would work to be harmonious with the surroundings. Like, leaving everything on Webster Road accessible is super important. We know that would be important if we lived in Bath. And we, we try to be very conscientious about how we, how we orient, place it. Where does the office sit? How big is the office? Things like that. To answer, I, his name is, your name is?
Mr. Kramer.
Mr. Kramer, sorry. To answer your question more specifically about traffic, it's 7 to 3 and 3 to 11. So that, so you're not dealing with your nine to five, Monday through Friday, otherwise work traffic. It's kind of off-cycle from that.
It's factory traffic.
Factory traffic, correct. Yep, and it's two shifts, not three.
So Commissioners, I guess, you know, another question, I guess, just to consider big pictures, that is, does that area, does the vision of that area, and you probably don't have a clear vision of what we want for that area, but does this facility correspond or, or conflict with the vision that you've had for that area of town?
That's the first thing I thought about is, you know, we're, we're looking at, and bringing you guys into this conversation too, we've been working on the, quote, Webster Road corridor as being kind of the new main street of Bath, widening it. In fact, we've already been, been planning to do that, nice, nice streetlights, walkways, a place for, you know, pedestrian traffic and growth. And then all of a sudden, we get hit with a 350,000 square foot anonymous building. I'm not allowed to know what's going on. So that's just something that raises the hair on the back of my neck, you know. And I hope you understand that's...
I could totally understand your apprehension based on the, the fact or the willingness of the, of the user to be anonymous at this moment.
Excuse me?
Oh, go ahead.
Can you tell us why the need for such anonymity?
There's, there's a few reasons. This, this is the third site. This would be the third time it was released in any form that they were moving to a place like this, and they're personally, it is my sentiment that they're unwilling to disclose more than they must until they know that it's a viable location, because they have stated where they're going, and it has fallen apart more than once. One for site restrictions. It was a triangular site. There was a eight-foot, there was a pipe that was eight feet in diameter, 10 feet in the ground that ran 1,200 feet through the site. Can't build on top of it. Found that out in the due diligence process.
Storm drain or something?
Yeah, Eden County storm, storm drain. And then we had had a previous experience with a different municipality that gave us a deal that sounded too, too good to be true, and then wasn't. And if you were to ask anybody that knew this company at all where they were going, they would have told you that it was going to that municipality, and they're just uncomfortable until they know that there's a plan that they can actually fulfill and execute, describing that in public.
So you won't make us feel bad if you're telling us that we're the third choice?
No, you, time, you're the first choice now.
But thank you.
Yeah.
So given the sensitivity of the second, I say that just because of this location and as raise that, you know, the plans to make Webster Road would be the main street kind of a path. We have a placemaking grant that we're considering, and so that would mean kind of doubling down on that vision, right? So creating sort of street art and lamps and... And so I imagine that we would be particularly sensitive to kind of, not only the use, harmonious use, but sort of its placement on the site and things like screening, and to making sure the building is a building that does not look too industrial or too warehousey.
Yeah.
And all of these things, which we won't have any idea on about right here.
Yeah.
But I'm just kind of conveying what I perceive is probably going to be some concerns around, you know, making sure that that area is something that we can still build with and develop into a mainstream vision for Bath.
Yeah, for sure. And just to kind of expand on that a little bit, when we spoke with Mr. Kessler about this site specifically, we didn't even, we were just, we let him know how much land we needed, and he was actually the one that said, hey, it would be smart to push this as far back as possible. It's really an extension of what hap, what's already been begun on Food Court. Maybe not at the scale, but the use type, warehousing, use type. So it would be more of an extension of what's already occurring with, with the Food Bank, while still preserving all of the land up front to do all of the commercial you'd ever want to, which, to your point, screening, definitely something to consider. But the hope would be over time, you'd end up with commercial that basically hides it unless you're addressing or looking at it from the Food Court Road.
And what kind of truck traffic would you anticipate for this site?
It's, I'm not going to say it's a little. I don't have the number specifically, but we've been told that it's not going to be, there won't be trucks sitting on Food Court. There, they, most of their contracts, as I'm aware, are related automotive suppliers, which means the trucks can't sit. So there's two types of traffic. One, trucks just sitting idle, sitting on a road, taking up space, getting in the way of everything, and then there's the frequency at which they come and go. I can't speak to the frequency, but I can speak to the, there's not going to be a parking lot of trucks sitting on Food Court Road, or Food Court.
Excuse me? If it's local traffic, you know, I mean, there's, like, Conbine, you know?
Yep.
Local manufacturers, it's very possible that they would just drop trailers and have a surplus. So empty trailers would be at the dock. The, the drivers would be loading them accordingly.
It is possible, for sure.
And then they just send somebody in to pick it up, take it out.
Yep.
It's not like they're, you know, live trucks sitting out there idling, waiting all day.
Right.
That's if you only have long haul, if you do that. I, I, I can't speak for everyone here, but I just want to emphasize that we're not against having something of like, like this in Bath Township. It's just, that location was, is pretty ironic that they picked the location that we want to beautify, you know?
Yeah. Well, and, and again, I, I wouldn't be standing here if my goal was to build a structure that was offensive to anyone. It's, I mean, it never is our goal. If you look at, I mean, even the storage building, it's storage, for example. And we tried our best to build something that looked presentable to the community, like chose the brick color, the, the amount of glass we installed, how, how intentional the signs were, the color of them. Yeah, and, I mean, I'll, I'll just let the other building speak for itself. We spent too much money there to make it ready.
What's up with that diner that's supposed to go in the center?
Uh, so, well, we can, we'll digress for a second. No, it's fine. Barry Bagels, I believe, is submitting for, for their building permit in the next week or two. And then Dunkin' Donuts, I believe, already did, so.
It's a, it's a nice-looking building.
Yeah, it is.
I appreciate that.
You did a horrible job with the drainage.
You're telling me.
They're working through it.
Yeah.
I wish that I could get my money back from Spicer.
I saw, I saw it today.
Probably shouldn't say that, probably.
Alright, George.
So I'm, I'm kind of, want to echo Dan in your screening and placement. Also, you know, I'm kind of a little bit concerned about whatever goes in there. Let's say it's housing or restaurants or whatever. A shift coming out with 50 cars, 20 cars, all of a sudden piling out of there. We already have issues, like at the school, we got lines going in and out of the school with similar time, 7 to 3, 7, 3 o'clock, similar times, not the, not the PM. But it's just, you know, for, for like a tight-knit community, just to have, all of a sudden have a whole bunch of cars from wherever there. It's hard for me to wrap my brain around. So I'm trying to figure that out in my head.
That was a concern for me as well, having Food Court, knowing they were going to be using Food Court, having BSNA and Somerset already using something that's very, very closely related, and then the Hill on Webster Road, of course. This will go through the same due diligence process that any other development would go through with having the Clinton County Road Commission taking a look at that and requiring a traffic study if that's necessary, which I think it might be. So I, I would anticipate you're going to see the same due diligence that you see with all the other projects that come before you, but I do feel like there's a significant effort to put this along the back of the property. I know that Mr. Kessler is aware of some of the citizen concerns that we had when we put in the Food Court, or the Food Bank, excuse me. I think he has that same intention of making sure that it is buffered, and that he adds to the, not only the buffering, the sound, the noise, keeping, you know, light on site, but taking that same care and concern with this development, because it is much larger as he did with the Food Court, Food Bank. I keep saying Food Court, I'm sorry.
Well, Food Court Drive.
Food Court Drive and, and Food Bank.
Yep, that's pretty much the only real concern I see is the location.
What I'm hearing is that, you know, there, there are concerns that are not concerns that relate to not wanting this or not being interested. It's just being careful about the site, giving it sensitivity. So are there, are there things that you would like from us for this meeting? I mean, I think it's a courtesy that you've given us to, to introduce this, and you want some preliminary feedback and questions, and I appreciate that. But are there anything that you want from us from this meeting?
I mean, honestly, I, I really just appreciate the candor, and I appreciate the opportunity to just throw this at you and say, we're not giving you a whole lot, but what are your initial thoughts? I mean, it's important to us, and I'm glad that we're thinking the same way. Like, where does this building sit, or, from an orientation perspective? The concern with any of the adjacent neighbors? I've actually, I intended this week, reach out to the neighbor that would be to the back.
West.
West. I know that he was a little concerned with the, the Food Bank building, and we thought it would be smart to just get ahead of that and just say, hey, we know we wouldn't be making you happy, but is there anything we can do to mitigate that as much as possible? But again, as far as the buffering is concerned, the traffic is concerned, these are things that we're also concerned with, and we don't want to come in here and just build a building that nobody likes. The goal is really to provide job opportunities, both blue and white collar jobs. Like, it's not just $10 an hour factory work at all. There's a lot of specialized processes involved, which require engineers, it requires management. There's all sorts of jobs that would be created in this, and we just want to be a good neighbor, more than anything. And, and again, we were just scrambling, looking for sites, and we were like, what's in Bath? Because of our experience that we've had working with this, with this group in the past, and knowing that you're all practical, rational actors with reasonable concerns and good questions, and aren't afraid to hold our feet to the fire when the drainage sucks. But it's, it's not because of ego. It's because of expecting what you were sold on, and we can, we can respect and appreciate that, and we love the opportunity to have, to be able to do it again. That's truthfully why we're here.
I didn't, I didn't feel third best at the time of knowing that when we met. I think that we have the right amenities and the right space close to the highway that can really facilitate this business having growth and having an impact on this community. So I, I think if I could say that things aligned correctly for this to be the right place, I think that's what occurred.
One thing I thought about immediately as soon as I saw it is, what about having another outlet at a date? And I didn't know if you were buying the entire 40-acre parcel from...
He won't let us. He won't, he won't let us.
He wants to grab it on the north side. Anyway, if you had an out, a drive on Drumheller?
Yeah, and that's actually contemplated. It, it's, it's something that we are considering right now, and actually SCUMA may require it.
Yes.
For the, for the, the direction of the drain.
Yeah, because we had contemplated paving Drumheller, so maybe that could...
Help facilitate that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that's part of the conversation we're having with SCUMA right now, is how do we get that drain from Webster to the lift station on Drumheller? And without it going underneath this building, and it would take a path that follows where you would want a road to go.
Sure. Well, I think, yet again, I can't speak for everyone, but we're more willing to work with you than against you.
I appreciate that.
Can you advise as to when you might be ready to come to this group with more information?
I mean, the timeline is, is fast, and again, I don't even want to talk about speed right now because we're, because we're apprehensive about, about giving away more information. But yeah, I mean, I'd like to be in front of this board in the next 30 days again with a lot more information, with a, this is like a, is this something that you guys even think is a decent idea? Or is it just, get out of here, we don't want to even think about that? Again, for the sake of the...
I just thought maybe for the Commissioners, having a timeline of understanding when you'll be back, and then when you'll be able to share more information with them.
In the next 30, 60, for sure, for sure.
I don't think you're hearing any notes.
Yeah, I'm going to be the outlier, but I understand MEDC is involved in this project. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah, yeah. It's very...
Well, I personally have a quarrel with MEDC, because for some reason, they ignore all the commercial sites that we already have that people have walked away in Flint and Detroit and in Lansing, and there's lots of sites there, and they've got water, they've got sewer, they've got utilities, they've got people living in the area that would like to have a job locally. And yet, we're going to go out and build an area that you've got to drive to, and in many cases, we're not offering a pay scale that can afford, have a local person even working there. This is a high-rent district in Bath. I don't know if you're aware of it, but these people are going to have to be making $60,000 to $80,000 a year to be able to afford to work there, as far as I'm concerned, and I don't know too many places that are willing to pay that kind of money. So why are we always looking to locate out in suburban area on land that is not been used for commercial? And yet, we're going to walk away from sites that have been, and I'd like to know why MEDC even supports this type of activities.
I can't speak for MEDC.
Well, I know you can't.
I, I...
And the other concern I have is you've got 13 acres of hard surface here, and I don't see any provision for stormwater retention.
So there is a plan for stormwater retention. It's to the north. It's in the wooded area. So there is a plan for stormwater retention. It's to the north. It's in the wooded area. Um, it's part of the plan that Keps is working on currently.
Northwest corner.
Correct.
Oh, the northwest.
Yep. It's a non-delineated wetland.
Yeah.
And it's, in both the cellar and the civil's opinion, the logical location for stormwater. The majority, we, according.
I think it's right in here. Am I correct?
Yeah, correct. And according to the drain commissioner, that's where the water wants to go anyway.
Yes, that is correct.
So there would be some first flush measures put on site as well to get rid of any, you know, contaminant trash, things like that before it would hit that. But that's where the water would go. Um, and then as, just quickly to speak on your, your point about brown field sites versus green field sites. Uh, I cut my teeth renovating old structures and making them nice again. And one thing I can tell you is when you're dealing with specialized, even switching a school to an apartment building is catastrophically expensive and wildly unknown. And there is no way to contemplate how much it's gonna cost, what you're gonna find when you start digging, how deep you're gonna have to go to get rid of it. All of the things.
Personally involved in some of those projects.
Yeah. Um, I have lost many paychecks, many, rob Peter to pay Paul to fix all sorts of financial problems and buildings like that. It's, I to, I couldn't agree with your sentiment more, but I understand the practical challenges involved with trying to adapt something that was one, that was built to be one thing into something else.
Well, I understand them too, but it seems to me in the big picture of society, we're kinda neglecting what would make perfectly good sense in the long talk.
No, I can, I can appreciate that, that concern for sure.
Ray, what, what's the height of this building?
Uh, I believe the building as proposed is thirty-five, thirty, thirty-five. Yeah, it's right at the limit.
Think about sinking it about fifteen feet underground.
So that hill back there is actually gonna come down substantially. So the view line from, from Webster, it won't actually be pronounced above, it will be brought down. So, uh, Mr. Kessler believes the smartest way to balance the site is move all, move that hill forward and bring that hill down. So your grade drops by like ten feet.
Yeah. That would help with, uh, noise propagation too?
Yeah.
I, I don't know. I'm.
George?
Yeah, so I'm, I'm still not sold on a manufacturer of Ford sitting in a residential area we're trying to create. So I just wanted to make that known.
Well, we haven't had those kinds of discussions, I mean, about what that area Webster Road could, it's, it's not zoned residential at the moment, right?
No, no.
So, I mean, it certainly could be, but it's not at present.
De-developed, correct?
De-developed.
That's right. Yeah.
Uh, what is the long-term goal of it? Are they looking to add on in the near future, leave it as is? I mean, what, what can you give us?
Yeah, yeah. As far as I'm aware, the, it's, their production capacity is rated in metric tons. They don't believe that they will ever exceed twenty thousand metric tons in this area for this site. So if they were gonna build something else, it wouldn't be in addition to this site, it would be that building as contemplated, period. And if they were to build something else, it would just be in a different area. Uh, that's the maximum capacity that they believe that they would have in this region.
Other questions?
I think one of the benefits of the location is it sits next to our subsidized housing. That folks from both areas of the community, the primary areas of the community where low income folks live could walk to work if they wanted to, which is not something we have in Bath, really anywhere else. So I think that's a, a benefit here.
Where's the subsidized housing?
Right here, right over there.
Hawks Ridge.
Hawk Ridge, thank you.
No, Hawk County was not subsidized housing. The opposite of subsidized housing.
Other questions are coming?
A fellow from Hawk Ridge this year, he said that they were no longer participating in the four twenty-five, or not, before. Section eight, remember that discussion?
I do remember that comment, yeah.
About the buildings he's building along the front.
But I don't know if that was.
We'll be looking forward to it.
I think that's the new, the new buildings.
Honestly.
I think there are, there are units in the old, the previously built buildings.
Didn't their pilot expire?
Yes.
So where's the low income housing?
They're still mostly low income people living in there. No, over there.
No.
Are we done with these guys?
We're talking almost done. So, uh.
I mean, I knock doors a lot and the folks in there self-identify as low income. In sort of a way that you wouldn't ask.
Uh, you know, it sounds like we have enough interest with some major concerns here and there.
But I appreciate hearing that.
To see the, the full plans, yeah.
Awesome. Well, thank you so much for your time. Oh, yeah, go ahead.
Give us the next time you come, if and when you decide to give us more information, if you could give us some type of, of noise level expectations.
No problem.
Can do that, something that citizens are gonna want to know as well.
Absolutely.
I, I can say I was very impressed, sitting around the table, um, they really have this down to a science in the other countries that they're working in. They know what's coming in, when they know what's coming out.
Right.
Um, they know what's going into the water, they know what's, um, being output. So I think that that's something very easily they'll be able to provide for us.
Yeah, this isn't the sixties anymore. I'm happy with that.
Yeah.
Like I say, I grew up in North Lansing, if you're familiar with that.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Motor Wheel, uh, I only drive Ford, all of those.
Oh, yeah.
That's where I played when I was a kid.
Thank you for coming.
Absolutely, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Exactly.
Okay, so we are moving on. The second item under new business is just kind of an open discussion on, uh, various items that we have talked about as a planning commission, um, and thought we might benefit from having a superintendent here to kind of go through some of these issues. So there's, there's really kind of no introduction here because we've been talking about these things for quite a while, but, we'll start with the, the first one, which is just the capital improvement process, uh, CIP process. Um, and we all know kind of what the, the concerns are that we've been talking about for months and years. But I think it's just kind of to open up this for discussion. Karen, if you want to add anything about that before we get to the discussion, that's fine, but otherwise, just open it up for comments and questions.
No, I would love that.
Okay, alright. So let's start with the CIP process.
Okay.
What concerns do we have? What suggestions do we have? How could this be made better, um, from our perspective?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if it's from our perspective, but I just.
Okay.
Again, Karen, you know, I'm beating a dead horse, but just, you know, we have one that's been approved and allocated funds for and yet more than two years, nothing's happened.
Mm-hmm.
I don't, I just don't want to see it go the way of the bathrooms at Cousins, you know?
Sure.
Um, there are plenty of things we could do irrespective of the fact, you know, whether or not we knew where that survey was gonna go, you know, the, the, the trailhead parking lot could be, could be done right now.
And I think.
Incidentally, in that respect, um, I wonder if we should, I think we should look at, um, recycled asphalt as a, as a surface that's compacted. Um, it's permeable and it's, uh, pretty stable. And in fact, you can even make it ADA compliant. I was reading over those, uh, things. And also, um, and I'm speaking explicitly about a specific CIP, I hope, I hope that's okay, sir. Um, I spoke at length with Schlegel and I think we're all familiar with Schlegel Sand and Gravel. They have probably ten thousand tons of recycled asphalt right now. And Amanda, who works in their office, at one time, she was going to donate to Friends of Park Lake, two hundred tons of recycled asphalt for the purposes of that trailhead. Um, and they have since been sold to a overseas concern, Middle East ironically. And, um, so she said, we can't donate it, but we could give it to you for probably twenty dollars a ton. And it's about two hundred tons, we figured it would take to go from the water control structure back and do the, the parking lot. So that's five thousand dollars incidentally that she offered to do that for, and that's delivered. So I, and, and the reason I say that is because, um, talk has been, um, of paving asphalt, uh, was washed. And I just think maybe we should look at something that, like that recycled asphalt would be you know, it, it's not dusty, it's not chalky like that limestone. It's.
That has been a problem.
It's permeable and it's very easy to re- repair as opposed to, you know, like if you get a hole in an asphalt parking lot, you're screwed, you know? So that's just something I think, I think would be to look at. But back to be, uh, on the subject, I just, I'm just really hesitant for us to do a lot of work on CIPs when this single CIP has just been, I don't want to say taped aside, but.
Sure.
Pretty much.
And, and from my perspective, I think that there have been many parties at work here and I know Park Lake, um, Friends of Park Lake, as well as the Park Lake Advisory Board, Parks and Recreation have been involved with this project for a long time. And it, at least during my time here since two thousand twelve. I do admit that communication has been, um, lax. Um, it has been very difficult to understand what the property owners in that area were going to do. Um, it's been diff, it's been, um, difficult to understand, even working with Phil Hanses, who's a tremendous drain commissioner. Um, but I've been working with him on the issue of having the land, um, basically donated over, granted to us and they would maintain an easement for the maintenance of that drain. Um, so there are a lot of moving parts here and I, and I know that it's been a painful process for many people that have been involved. I think I'm the third superintendent to have involvement with it. Um, it may be fourth.
I don't know.
Several planning commissions, I'm sure. And I know that it's been a frustrating process for you. Um, I sat at a meeting the other day and in this, no way should, um, take away from the frustration, but I heard another manager talk about having a trail fifteen years in the making come to fruition finally this year. Um, and I, I was shocked by that and I think.
Commissioner's, I mean, I.
No, 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 not from here.
Oh, oh, oh.
From another community.
Right.
So, um, it, I, it isn't always easy, um, and it's not that we work on these things the same project day after day after day after day. So I do recognize that it's been frustrating for you and I can see why you would be remiss if you didn't say, um, it, the process either makes me not want to do it again or it needs to be done differently. And I can appreciate that.
Karen, are there, um, just dialing out a little bit, are there, are there any lessons learned about this, some things about process that can reflect limitations of the CIP process generally?
So I think sometimes, and I, and I won't, um, I won't say this negatively about any group that's been involved in this, but when a, a, a project comes from a, a committee or even a group of, of residents, of Friends of Park Lake, nonprofit, um, it isn't always at the level it would need to be for us to grab it and run with it. Because there are other things that need to be done, other things need to be considered, um, including just other workload. Um, so taking a looking at the, uh, li, go ahead, if you.
No, no, just one thing I, I saw, if I may interject here, um, for the general CIP process, I think the rules for a CIP, um, you know, we grade them, you know, they, they come from the various committees, they come to us, we grade them in regards to priority, things of that nature. And then they go to you and the, and the township board for yays or nays. I think once a CIP is granted and, and brought to life, if you will, before it's even allocated funds, I think there should be a project manager assigned, a person to marshal it. I don't think, and no offense to you at all, Karen, but I, I think you have way too much on your plate to be marshalling CIPs personally. And that's, correct me if I'm wrong, that's what happens right now.
That's correct.
You have to take the time to say, okay, okay, Ben, here's what I think we should do tomorrow. You know, you gotta do this and this and this. And then, oh, by the way, I have to go to the SCUMA because that's much more important. And I understand that. But what I, what I would like to see on a CIP is to have you delegate. And if that takes a special, you know, like one of Ben's cohorts or something, or somebody else, somebody, maybe even this committee could be, could be the project management entity. But I just think that would make it more, much more smoother, it would be much more, God forgive me for saying this, but it would be much more businesslike and, uh, and I think personally it would go a lot smoother and as planned.
Yeah. I see one of the biggest hurdles being with, especially with this project, having been the third or fourth superintendent to work on it. You know, you know that there was a survey done back in twenty-ten. I'm gonna just throw out a year. Um, I know that there was another survey done when Dan Watiu was here. Um, and then the board wanted another survey done, well, I, under, under, under my, I will say, administration. Um, so it gets very difficult because I think you see the spinning of the wheels, but I'm just trying to carry out the thing that I've been asked to do to make sure that we're putting something in the right spot. But during that time, you've, you've indicated that frustration and there's really nothing I can do with that frustration because this is coming from my bosses who say, we need a survey to make sure this thing's going in the right spot. We've heard things not, might not be where they were back in the day. Um, this thing may be running through a ditch out into the woods. So I think that's been part of the frustration is that things you thought were done twenty-ten, twenty-fifteen are now being done again. And you see that, I know you, you're, in your frustration would say that, call that a waste.
Well, what I, what I know is for a fact is that surveys, when they're done, there's irons put in the ground.
Mm-hmm.
And those are legal, legal refer, reference points. And when somebody in the past has surveyed, and it's like when you sell your property, I mean, they go look for the stakes.
Mm-hmm.
And that's where those, those stakes, they, they just, you wanna talk about frustration is they keep surveying the wrong area.
Yeah.
And putting them in the wrong way. That's, that, uh, legacy survey that they did recently by E and G was of the base roadbed that, that Spicer actually changed when they put the water control structure, uh, berm in. And that, their new survey is now prevails over that old survey. And yes, that old rough survey did go and take out, uh, Ken Tarami's hundred and twenty year old oak tree, but that was literally put in there before there was even a ditch there, an outlet to Park Lake. And, and they never, you know, the, the powers never took that into being. But I guess what, what I'm saying is therein lies the, the, the problems behind this particular CIP and it could potentially happen on any other CIP if there's not a central person taking care of arguments and, and, and questions and, uh, dilemmas that need to be solved.
Mm-hmm.
You know, you have to have a, a flow chart.
Yeah.
You have to know what's going on. Instead, we just kind of put it under the rug until somebody says something about it again. And so I, you know, and we've, we've, it's not the same, the bathrooms at Cousins, but in my recollection, those are the only two CIPs that I really remember that were moderately large and could potentially benefit the township that haven't. They've just been stuck and mired in their own ambiguity, you know?
Generally, though, I think, we hear from lots of people, I think it's the, the basic critique is, or the problem is that, you know, we're not managing expectations very well about the process. People are invested in the process in various ways, like this project or other projects, right? That just, you know, partly it's their fault, partly it's sort of a communications problem about them not understanding that when we do our thing as a planning commission, you know, we have very little, um, oversight as to what happens after that, right? And essentially, the part that we do is, I, I mean, it's not too important in the big scheme of things in terms of allocating funding and actually seeing the project through. Um, yet we do hear people that come to us and say, look, you know, you gave this the highest score in two thousand eighteen.
Correct.
And I'm wasting my time here, why are you doing this? When you guys are doing that and you're telling us this is a great project and then it fizzles out.
Yeah, so.
That's a, that's a very general concern.
It is, and I think that it's a fair one too. And coming from my perspective, and I don't know what previous superintendents did with the CIP process, but I have tried in the last few years to make you aware of the spending challenges that are coming before me, whether it's police cruisers, fire trucks, infrastructure for sewer roads, um, those are all things that I have to take into consideration too. And, and I don't know if previous superintendents submitted those to the CIP or if they were, um, evaluated or not evaluated. Um, so I've been trying to just help you all understand where I'm facing. Um, I probably would not have taken up, I'm gonna just point to the trail, um, because I know I have to put an extra, so many thousands of, hundreds of thousands of dollars into the roads in the next couple of years. Or, um, with a project like the one we saw tonight, um, that will require significant infrastructure, sewer infrastructure paid for part, in, in part by the township. We are pursuing other avenues where there are, might be MEDC money available, um, to us to help with that infrastructure because that's not infrastructure we would have put in had there not been a, a, a project that wants to come to our community. So, um, that's how I've been taking a step forward and trying to let you all know my challenges of what I'm facing each year. Um, I mean, we take a baseline, I think, four hundred thousand dollars for roads and I know that the last couple of years we've voted signif, to add significantly more to that budget to try to keep our roads in good condition. Um, the same with the sewer. Um, so I don't know if that's helpful for you at all to understand that, but that's how I've been trying to communicate my spending challenges.
Most of us, most of us realize that, I think, but there's no, there's no formal way that that enters into our conversations or decisions or rankings or anything. Being aware of it, I think gives us all an understanding about where, contextually, sort of what we're doing and how it fits into a bigger picture, right? But it materially has no, has no bearing on sort of the job that we do, right? Because we're not asked to balance budgets and allocate funds and to do any of that, right?
Correct.
And rightly so, we're not asked to-
Thank you.
It's appreciated in context.
Yes.
But it's also like, it's, it's removed from what we do and therefore, if people are coming to us with these sort of problems about, you know, expectations, we can explain these kinds of things.
Sure.
But it's sort of limited to actually changing any actions that they have, right?
I think I've also found myself frustrated with the process in that you all do a lot of work to put together a recommendation that comes to the board, that the board accepts. But then generally the board has no discussion or excitement around anything that they say, yeah, like this is a great project, we wanna make sure we pick this up and put it into the, into the, the budget. That's been different for me, but this is a board too that has been criticized for not having strategic, a strategic plan. But I don't know that the board previous in two thousand sixteen had any better luck when they had a strategic plan, if they picked up any CIPs and, and did them at that time either. So there's been no real great way to say, okay, here's this document from the planning commission, now what?
Is part of the problem there that in an ideal world, do you wish that whatever that document looked like from the planning commission and whether it's reflecting in the plans submitted by the individual applicants, right? Or was, would, if it were more robust, would that make some difference into sort of the actions that the board might take? I mean, because the, the Trails project, it kind of sounds like they, they sort of did what they needed to do based on what we asked them to do. But there was just so much more work to do, it was more complicated. You know, even if the board approves it and allocates funds, it's like they're not ready to, you know, start digging or, you know, breaking ground because there's so much more to do.
Well, there, when you say there's so much more to do, what do you mean?
Well, I guess I was referring to some of the things that Karen was talking about, the complexities about-
Other things, you mean?
What's that? No, no, I, I just mean even related to this project, right?
Oh, oh.
Discussions with residents, the drain commissioner, roads, whatever.
Therein lies the, the project management individual. I think that, that would be a great thing to do, you know, even if we had to hire somebody, and I made that proposal for you before myself, but-
Well, I guess that what I'm getting at though is on the front end, can we sort of, you know, do we ask more of people who are submitting projects? Than the two pager or whatever it is that we're asking them to do? Some are quite elaborate, right?
Oh, yeah, very.
Yes.
People that are putting bids together, you got plans together. Other things are almost like they're drawing things on back to napkins, right?
I don't think that that would help. I, I think-
When you say that, can you explain?
What he was just talking about, a more robust process with more information. I, I think that would ultimately end up burning people and spending a lot more time on projects that still would get ignored by the board. There just isn't a good, you know, functionally, projects need a champion on the board. To pick it up out of the budgeting process, lift it up unless the staff does. If the staff doesn't do that, it takes a board member and even then, I honestly couldn't come up with a project right now that I think I could get across with this board. Not even every, just four of us. And, and part of the problem is, it's like we have five meetings for the budget, now let's think of this big new thing. Like, we're gonna build a park, we're gonna do this thing. And the board functionally wants to get through the budget and that just gums it up. So the timing is off in that. And there has to be a, an eagerness of growth and progression. We, we're still acting like we're a small community with small wants and small needs, but our staff here at the front desk will tell you, people come in and they're demanding twenty twenty-three amenities and services and we're just not there yet. Even if we hired someone to be a project manager, we have no place in this building to even house them. So like those are the things we're run, rubbing up against and you all have heard me bemoan this before, but you know, we are in this transformative stage right now from a small rural community to a, you know, not big community, but a bigger community that requires more of us. And this building, this staff, this board is not ready for that change yet. And maybe actively fighting against it. So I think that unless that stuff changes, we all can keep sending projects night and day. But you know what's getting the attention right now? An extension of the senior center. The, the staff has not indicated they want, that the numbers don't show that they need, but the board's put money toward that project already and that hasn't gone through our process. Because it's got a couple of folks on the board, you know, and it's how politics work, right? Who are moving it through the process and elevating its, uh, its prioritization. So that, that, it's, it's just hard to, it's hard to coach any other committee to say, hey, you know, rec committee, if you wanna build a new park, you should go through the same route. What they would be smart to learn from is go around this group, go right to the board, find a couple of board members who are, you know, really into it and then nag us every meeting and dare us not to say yes. And I mean, that is what the senior center advisory board has done. And I don't mean that as a criticism, I think it's an incredibly smart strategy that is paying off for them. So, you know, if I'm a committee chair somewhere else, I'm looking at that, that's what's working, not this thing.
I have had people say in the past too, well, why wasn't this in the CIP? There will be projects that come and I believe Adam Montre just got permission with staff to apply for a, a D N R Spark grant for a hundred and, I think, sixty-seven thousand dollars. Why wasn't that part of the CIP process? I do hear that frequently, but I don't know what that means to the individuals that are actually saying that. Like it should have been in there before it ever became a thing? If it should have been proposed to you all to be rated and scored and deemed worthy of funding? Or, you know, I, I don't know what that means when people say that to me.
To me, I, I take that to mean, there's a process and the process is not only about sort of, you know, involving this body, but it's about transparency and understanding that, you know, when you veer from that process, then it seems like it's ad hoc or it seems like it is just a violation of if there is a norm.
Or the squeaky wheel.
Exactly, right?
I was gonna say, I've been pretty squeaky.
Is that, that may have been the way that Bath has operated.
Correct.
Traditionally, but we can't continue to do that if we are actually gonna be more strategic-
Correct.
And forward looking in our planning. It, it won't work that way.
Correct.
If I could offer a segue here, just, I, I'm just talking at food, food for thought. And Karen, you and I have spoken on this a couple of times. And I, I kinda know your feelings about it, but I would urge all of you, including you, to once again, uh, look at Michigan Compiled Law Act one five seven of nineteen oh five. And it's a park and green space commission, very similar to this group, except there are elected individuals that, that take care of the parks, the bathing beaches, the fishing piers, and they have a budget, they have either taxes or bonds to fund them. And what that would, of, of course, yes, that, that requires money coming in to do that, but they would be responsible for all the parks and upkeep of all the parks. And, you know, prima facie, that, you, you, you and I talked about that, about, oh my God, more taxes. But what it would, what it would relieve is Ben's budget would go under that, Ben's salary would go under that, all his workers' salaries, everything they do on, on the parks would go under that and come right off from your general budget. Anyway, so there are other ways to look at it, but that's kind of a segue to CIP. But what I see are, I think, three, four CIPs coming up that Ben had that are all park related. And I went, gosh, that right there would alleviate everything. I mean, he would, you wouldn't have to go through a CIP to do the parks thing because they'd have their own budget, they'd have their own agenda. He would say, okay, well, we need to do, do this in twenty twenty-four.
You have to go through CIP.
Excuse me?
I think you have to.
Well, you would, yeah. But I'm saying some, you wouldn't have to when you were, you were, you know, enlarging or you were buying a piece of equipment or something of that nature, you have it in your budget. So I guess that's what I'm trying to say, you know? We can look at it negatively or positively, but I just think we're getting to the point where Meridian Township was ten, twelve years ago. They now have Parks and Green Space Commission.
And I see them building bridges to know where to as far as I'm, but they can't fix the road right adjacent to it.
Oh my gosh, that road. But anyway, that's another thing. But I just, I just, let's just look at that and see if maybe that's another way to plan, you know, for the future. So I don't know if you guys have ever even read the, read the, the, uh, the law, but it's fascinating. And, and I've looked at probably a half a dozen other townships roughly our size and some even smaller that have that commission. And, you know, they still go, have to go to the, the township board for ultimate approvals, but it's, it's a lot different. And I just think it would help in measureably. And it would, and sincerely, I would like-
I don't doubt that it would help. I mean, I, I think we have lots of ideas about hiring more staff and would help the township. A grants person, I think we've mentioned, we talked about this a few weeks ago.
And that might be down, down the road.
Really helpful, right? And they would pay for themselves probably quite easily.
Yes.
Over and over and over again. But, you know, it sounds like one of the big problems here is, which is, I don't wanna say it's low hanging fruit, but it's not as costly, is just having some shared fidelity to the process, right? And making sure that the board and the planning commission and the staff are dedicated to the process. And so that there's confidence among citizens of Bath, that this is how it works. And sort of meeting their expectations.
Would it be possible, the CIPs, we've rewritten the, for the, the ordinance, if you will, the process so that only committees can do it? Would it be, would it be feasible for the specific committee that, that champions the, the CIP to be the project lead on those CIPs once they're approved?
I have my own opinion, but go ahead.
Well, I, I don't know if I have an opinion. I mean, we've kind of made sure that at least you need sort of sponsorship at this point. So they're not project leads as you're referring to them.
Well, they're not professionals and I think that's probably what you're, they don't have the authority to spend money.
Well, and that was what I was gonna say, is, is the authority, the oversight, I mean, there are internal controls to, to be thought of. There's, there's a lot of, there's a lot of what, what many people would call a red tape that would need to be followed. So even my ability to just spend more than five thousand dollars of, you know, just because I want to, I can't. There has to be, you know, there are rules and regulations in place so that I can't do that.
I was just thinking of the orchestration of the project, the CIP process, I mean, the project itself, once, you know, once it's-
Yeah, and unfortunately, I don't think, if I, if I think of like a senior center or an expansion to a building like that, I'm not thinking people understand that maybe as well as staff because they, they're not dealing with architectural drawings and building permits and engineering and, and the different things that need the permits that come into play and, and how those things work through the process. So I'm not trying to undercut anybody, but I, I just don't know that they would know the process to be able to guide it through.
Yeah, well, other than staff, you know, most of us are merely volunteers, but we do have some professional experience, so.
Yeah.
That's, I was speaking probably in relation to this, this group and maybe Park Lake Advisory Group. Those are the only two I intimately know that have, you know, professionals on it. Yeah, I understand and agree with what you're saying.
So are there other concerns or questions, issues that need to be raised related to CIP?
I, I think some of these, we don't always get all the information that would bring the project to fruition because they don't know nor do we know. Sometimes you get involved in this and you don't have the right of way you need to do or you have a citizen that's gonna throw a monkey wrench in the middle and delay the process and run the cost up. And sometimes we don't even know what the legacy costs are gonna be. And this is an issue that we're all trying to deal with. Because I don't think any of us wanna spend money just indiscriminately. Personally, I'm really glad we didn't build any bathrooms at Cousins' Park.
Yeah, well, you know, it was- It was merely a, merely a reference point for me. I worked on, I was on the Parks and Rec Committee when we worked on that for five years or so.
Right, I understand, but I think in the long term, use of Cousins' Park, it was a good move not to build restrooms there.
I didn't understand it because we don't own the park.
Well, we don't own the park.
That's what I've always never understood.
And, and the problem I've got is the school is right across the street and the people that would utilize the restrooms allegedly were the people that used the, the recreational facilities there that, where they played games, both football or baseball and soccer. I, I don't know about soccer, but I know that I see them playing baseball there. And yet the school won't open their building to provide them with access to the restrooms that are right there inside the door of the school. They could, they've got gates they could put up so people can't yonder in the building, but they won't do that.
The days of public people entering school facilities is over.
Yes.
Well, that was not the case at the time, that was discussed.
Sure, but I'm saying it's over now.
Well, that could be, but I, that's another issue that I don't really agree with how we're dealing with.
So to your, to your point, Chuck, I mean, any project has the same concern, right? Any, anytime you're engaged-
So I, I think the, the frustration I see from Ray and some of the other people about these projects is they don't really understand all the hurdles that you get into once you start trying to bring the project to fruition and making, you know, an active going on project, right? And we don't communicate that well, I don't think, in a lot of cases. Because I don't know why we don't, but I, I mean, we're not getting a lot of feedback on the projects that we've already discussed unless there's some reason for it. I mean, like, or you wanna go with that one, you know?
Yeah, like an S I P.
Well, and, and to be fair too, it's not clear what, of what benefit, what benefit there would be in having the planning commission informed as to where these things are going.
You'd understand why it wasn't progressing along the timeline you thought it should.
You would now, yeah.
Which we can share with the people that were involved.
And sometimes it's just, uh, uh, board members that aren't willing to go on record and say no to something.
Yeah, yep. They just don't wanna say yes or they don't wanna say no.
Yeah. I, I, you know, I'm not gonna dance around it, I mean, sometimes, sometimes that's the issue. Who's-
I would be happy if we never danced around anything, just right to the point. If I may mention one more thing about a CIP that Ben had mentioned that he may go on in the future is, is a bathroom at the beach. Is it okay, Chairman, if I speak about this just for a moment?
I guess, I mean, I wanted to keep it kind of high level.
Okay, yeah, and I, you know, kind of over, over, but anyway, I, just real quick, he had mentioned about wanting to put a, a more permanent bathroom there and mentioned one of those, like the D N R-esque kind of bathroom that has a vent and it's pretty much an outhouse. I just, I, they smell really bad. And the, the high rent district up on the hill, I think, might really benefit from that smell coming out of there because it's right on a downwind thing. So I would really like to see permanent bathrooms at the beach and with an outdoor shower facility that people could rinse off after they, after they, I think that would be a great benefit to the community. But anyway, just as long as we were talking CIPs, I just, just mentioned that to Ben. Go baby.
Any last comments on CIP and if not, we can move on to our next question.
All set.
I need, timing, I was gonna say, timing, the, actually how the process goes. I mean, I'm welcome to anything. I mean, this is something that I, I have watched other superintendents, I have watched other planners, Miles and I, you know, Nick and I, I mean, there, there's been a lot of conversations about how to fix this and I don't know that we've ever landed on it. It's a complicated process. I'm not even sure of looking at another community and saying they're doing it right. Even guarantees that we would do it right. So I, I truly believe it's gonna be a, a work in progress. I'm committed to doing that, if you're committed to doing that. I think we've tried to change timelines and change how, how, who and how people can apply. And, and I just in good faith will commit to doing that with you as long as we keep doing that because I, I really don't know the answer.
Most of the meetings that I've been at, Karen, nobody's got a perfect solution.
No.
CIP.
Yeah. I mean, if there was an unlimited pot of money somewhere.
Well, even in that, I don't think there's a last option solution.
Yeah.
I mean, I think the planning commission is amenable to changing whatever we can do on our part to make the process go easier. I just don't, I'm not confident that whatever we do is kind of the problem here.
No, I'm, I'm not either.
I, I don't think our ranking is perfect by far, right? I don't think, you know, all of that, I think could be improved in some ways. But to me, that's not the fatal flaw of what happens here with CIP.
I have one suggestion.
Yeah.
AI. That'll be- That'll be the, that'll be the bane of all of us that one day.
We have, we have improved though, so it is getting better.
I do, I do believe that.
It is getting better.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, so let's move up to the next discussion item, which might be a quicker conversation. It's a narrowly framed, I think, certificate of occupancy process, and we're all thinking about East Lansing Storage.
Rabidaries.
Yes. Thinking about this topic. So, John, you wanna start us off? Looks like you did want to, kind of.
Well, yeah, with the building department issued a permit and all the conditions of occupancy had not been met, and this has happened many times before. And Miles and I have discussed this a number of times. And I see now we've got a form, and I assume that at some point in time, we're gonna enforce the use of the form, the form. And if the department doesn't comply, I don't know what the procedure's gonna be, but, uh, maybe you can address that, Karen.
I would offer you that you have currently the most, um, attentive, um, process-oriented individual sitting as your planner currently.
We do.
Without a doubt. Um, I enjoy how organized he is. Um, he, he makes a lot of my world easier because of the way he is.
Makes us all a little easier.
And he is not afraid to ring the bell the minute something happens outside of a checklist or outside of a process. So I would contribute that he, um, adding a, another layer, as you, if you will, of a safeguard to ensure this isn't happening, um, is, is fully, um, on him. He can take the credit for that because he is excellent at this process. Um, he's also not afraid to address why it's happening, um, and what can, what can we do better next time? Um, in the instances that it's happened recently, in, in your example of East Lansing Storage, um, it was a matter of, a building inspector was going out and didn't communicate that with him. Ideally, he should be on site with that person, and they should be, you know, going through these things and saying, is this here, is that there, is, have all, have all the conditions been met? And I think he's lining us up so that continues, or, or will continue to go, happen in the future. Um, I, I don't know that this fully fixes it because, to be honest with you, it happened next week, um, and we would just do our best to, to fix that process. There, they're very individual, um, times when they've happened, and it's usually been a lack of communication, um, but I'll tell you, he's on top of it pretty quickly. So.
The problem is, once the occupancy permit's been issued.
Correct.
Lost our hammer.
We have, we have.
This was a limited, right, just example specifically, right? People were talking about one building.
It was for one building.
One building. I mean, so the letter just not all.
No, it's not all.
Yeah.
Is the top section supposed to be assessing department, or is it accessing?
Assessing.
That's what it's supposed to be?
No, I think it's assessing.
It's assessing.
I just didn't know if like the building people had an accessing depart, I don't, the building pe- piece is foreign to me.
If you're listening, do not obsess over this for the rest of your trip.
A good call.
He has come back the next day after a planning commission meeting. He'll say, oh, I spelled a word wrong, and I'll be like, give yourself some grace. It's, they're words, man. We all make mistakes. So I hope he's.
It was easy to fix.
I hope he's okay.
You'll meet him with a stick, wait.
He's hard on himself. I, he's, yeah, he's, he's very dedicated. So.
I mean, I, I'm, I've got confidence, 'cause.
I think this is a huge improvement.
Yeah, me too. And, you know, you learn from these kinds of mistakes, right?
Yeah.
It's just natural that this is the way it goes, kind of.
Yeah, hopefully this affects.
Yeah.
He brought this to our attention.
Yes.
Miles did, and we spoke about it last week, so that was good.
Yeah. I think some of the previous conditions, um, a, a staff person that issued an occupancy, um, that person's no longer here. I, I think some of the conditions that we've gone through have been corrected, um, in correcting people and then correcting process. So I have much more confidence in this process today than I did even last year.
Good.
So.
Glad to hear it.
All right, let's move on. Let's move on. So, yeah, the last one is the township owned properties. This is something that we first, it's a long time ago, I think.
About two years ago.
Yeah, and I think, um, I thought the board gave us some sort of mandate to do something or charge, to do something.
And Miles put it on our work, workload sheet that I haven't gotten to yet.
And so there's, there's planning to do around township properties, but I guess, I'm, I'm, I'm somewhat unclear as to what is the discussion we're having about this item.
Yeah, um.
Yeah, right.
On my own, if you can believe how weird that is, I actually took an inventory off-fetch of the township properties. This was before I was even on the planning commission and been looking at them. Um, but there's quite a few that we could just click right off because they're pumping stations and things that lift stations and things of that nature. But there are some that we would probably have absolutely no use for, that we could even offer for sale or trade.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that was one that, I think I mentioned that before to you, that, that woman that owns a couple, three, four properties adjacent to the Gupta property.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, all I can think of is Schuler, and I know that's not her name, but it starts with an S.
Yeah.
But there are other properties that maybe we could offer her a trade or something, you know?
Yeah.
That, if she's looking at it for, you know, that, that kind of things, if we, there are about sixty properties, and most of them are around Park Lake.
Well, we did get a report from Miles, right, out of that?
Yep.
Yeah, and I think Beth has even generated one in the past for you. Um, the, the thing is, is that oftentimes, um, the township will be offered first right of refusal in, um, tax foreclosures. Um, I will be willing to, be the first to admit that, um, I don't want the township to be a landlord, so I generally do not ever want properties that have homes on them, especially if they have someone living in them. Um, but then we get into issues of, then we have to incur the cost of knocking a home down or, or whatever is on the premises. Um, similarly with adjacent to West Waster Park, the benefit of that being, it was adjacent to West Waster Park and the park could be expanded. So that was a little different when we pursued that parcel. Um, so I think we, we generally, um, take those that come to us basically for free. Um, we have taken those in the past and probably will continue to do so unless there's a good reason not to. Um, there's a very short window from the county treasurer's perspective of us refusing to take those parcels, and then they go to tax sale. Um, there are other times when you have all moved heaven and earth, and I appreciate that, to evaluate a parcel we're looking at purchasing, uh, because it expands a park or it expands a township property, so we do appreciate that. But I do think it, there still is, um, the necessity to take a look at what we've got um, and decide possibly what can it be in the future? Um, should we sell it? Um, we all know that there's a housing shortage in this area. Um, I think bringing another two hundred jobs to this area will, will strain that even further. You're, if you're looking at people, will be transitory in the nature that they rent an apartment, um, to live close to work, or, um, maybe they live in a nearby community. But I know fellow managers in the area, all, all talk about housing shortages, especially in the middle, in the middle area of housing. Um, so it's very possible that some of those are, go for sale and those become developable, um, and a, and a home is put on them. That would be the ultimate, I think, for us to see. Um.
I have, um, in regards to, uh, the possibility of selling to a private individual.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, a township parcel, um, I spoke with the owners of the, the Creamery.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, Connie is very interested in that parcel adjacent to his, that abuts the lake and, and the empty, the empty lot.
Mm-hmm.
And he wanted, he wanted me to approach the township to see if, if he should put, 'cause I told him, I said, we're gonna be actively looking at, you know, whether or not the township wants to disseminate. And, and I, he said, well, what should I do? And I said, well, let me see if I can get some more information, so I, this may be a very good opportunity.
So once upon a time, he did approach the township with an offer to purchase that land, and the township declined. Um, that doesn't, that isn't to say that the board isn't different and times aren't different and that they might feel differently about it at this time.
Re-approach the?
He certainly can.
Okay.
I would say yes.
Would he go to you?
He can send me and, um, basically start communication with me. Um, and then generally, I take it to the board.
Yeah, okay, I will, I will.
Once some things are confirmed.
And I hope you don't mind me asking this at this meeting, but I just thought it was germane to this topic, uh, this conversation. There's, I mean, it would be ideal for him in, in that it's the only commercial property on Park Lake. Um, that would probably be a benefit to all of us, I think. But that's preliminary, just prima facie talk, so. Okay, I'll tell him that. Thank you.
Yeah, and I've had other people approach the township. Um, I receive generic offers frequently. Um, I think it's probably some type of clearinghouse that says, oh, what's available here, and, and they send me offers. Um, I have, I have real offers from people like, um, the Zygos that are interested in a particular piece of property and bring forth a, a serious offer to the board. Um, so I, I'm open to those and taking those to the board. But I do think, um, deeming which parcels are valuable to us and which we could parse off would be, would be helpful. I know it's not the, the highest, um, on your list of things to do, so.
It's on our work plan.
I do know that.
You're on our list, as we say.
It is on the list.
For the year.
I appreciate that.
Can I ask a question about a specific property? You, you may or may not know it. Uh, number thirty-two on my list.
I don't have your list. You'll have to tell me which one.
It's, I think it's a seventeen acre parcel north of Slate Road, and it's adjacent to the old railroad grade. Um, and I, it's. I guess that's what it is. I just wondered, do we, do we use that?
Our GPW uses it.
Okay, that's what I wondered. So that would be something that we wouldn't want to. That's, that's the single largest parcel in, in the township's, uh, coffer, yeah.
Yeah, and the second one is on Upton.
I was gonna say Upton, I'm surprised Upton Road wasn't bigger.
That's supposed to be Park, but.
That's supposed to be a park.
Yeah, but we, you know, whatever.
Well, the gravel pit could be Park too. We want to turn it around.
Sure, but it's just way out there, you know, so I just didn't know. So that's gonna be on our work schedule. I won't go any further than that.
Maybe we can even get Clinton County interested. They love gravel pits for parks.
Yeah, but it's gotta be a hundred and twenty acres, gotta have a beach.
Well, that's true. Maybe we should go back to mine and gravel it. I don't know if there's any gravel.
Talk to Kessler.
Not sure.
Sorry, we're getting off track.
No, information predates me. But if it, if it, if it's helpful, let us know what we can do to provide you with what, what parcels we might be using currently. Um, or what, what people have floated over time. I know that at, once upon a time, when, um, Mr. Hart, Hossford was still here, they talked about having the Upton Road also have a, um, another fire station on it so it could serve the other end of the township.
Oh.
So, yeah. So I know there have been a plethora of ideas. Um, some may still be relevant, some might not be, but.
Ryan just said, we'd have to get more firefighters than that.
Correct.
Get enough now.
So any other, other discussion around this item? And we do have a superintendent here, I guess, and I don't want to go off agenda too much, but.
I think one of the issues we had was how to evaluate what should be done with the property. And there was really no parameters that we never developed.
I think that was probably, that's going to be, I think, part of the discussion.
That's part of the discussion. We never really had that dis- discussion, and I don't know whether you'd had some input on that, Karen, or whether that's a forward to things that we should find out.
I, I think you would purely be impressed when staff has sat around, Miles, um, Beth, the assessor, myself, um, you know, there's a lot of institutional knowledge around the table. There's a lot of knowledge of families and how land has been passed down, um, over, over time. Um, so I think it's very interesting what sometimes we know, and we could, we could fill in some blanks, I think, for all of you, just to share what we know, to add to what you know. Um, and that might help us move forward.
Cool. Um, one last thing that I, Schenkel, it was her name, that parcel next to the Gupta property you just purchased?
Uh-huh, she's, she's interested in talking.
Good, because this is, there's, I hope you don't mind me speaking about this, it's kind of a segue. If you were able to get that parcel, guess what the next three parcels are?
MDOT.
Exactly. And they said, if you're adjacent, if you're, if you own adjacent properties, then they would be willing to talk, MDOT, about porting that property over to the township. They have done it before, but that property right there is pivotal. Sorry, it's kind of a.
She's, she's indicated a willingness to have conversation.
Audience tonight, so.
I am. No, and I love it. I know that you had mentioned previously that I used to attend quite more frequently, and, and I appreciate being missed. Um, I, and I, I would have to say that of a lot of the groups that I attend, I do enjoy this one. Um, you, you all handle yourselves very well. You come from different walks of life, and you're able to get business done so well and so respectfully, and I really appreciate that about this group. You really have never, ever backed away from a challenge, so.
That's one of the reasons I wanted to be here.
Yeah.
Other comments or questions for Karen?
Uh, no, that's it.
Okay. Do you, both, we'll go to the next agenda item.
Okay.
So do we have a report from planning?
Um, I was not given one, if you.
I don't think so.
Okay.
All right, so that brings us to the second opportunity for public comment tonight. Would anyone like to address the planning commission?
My name's Joan Matson, and I live at one, five, three, four, four, Club Course Drive. Um, just two things. One, I realized tonight with the discussion that I don't know the extent of the Webster Road improvements, how far south and how far north they go. Can you tell me where they start and where they end? Would they impact that, uh, project that was presented here?
Yeah, so.
Does it go north of?
It's a county project to basically resurface the road, um, and that goes from all the way to the intersection, I would pass, to Clark, to, what?
Up to Clark Road.
Up to Clark Road, yeah, up to Clark Road. So the, the county had planned to refinish Webster Road, and so they invited us to sort of get engaged to have a discussion about sort of, you seeing this as an opportunity to kind of do the things that we envision happening on Webster Road. And so that, that's kind of where that's at right now. And we had some of those discussions. We had an ad hoc committee that had some of those discussions. I think you were, I don't know if you were in attendance in the last meeting when Miles was talking about a placemaking grant.
Mm-hmm, yes.
That we're pursuing, which would sort of, again, be the same idea of sort of establishing Webster Road as the main sort of downtown area of that.
Right, but then, when this project came, I wondered if it was going to extend it all north, say, of, uh, Clark up to?
The, what project, though?
North of the freeway.
Project, no, it stops at Clark. The resurfacing stops at Clark.
Right, but the, the kind of overall planning that you were doing about making it a, a beautified, uh, center of the city, whether, how, how you were thinking of it incrementally? If you extended the city, would you be extending it? You know, what your vision is along Webster.
Still working on that, but so, for, for example, I think the placemaking grant, one of the things that, the major thing, I think, is street lighting.
Mm-hmm.
And so I think that stops at Clark Road as well, I believe, now.
Just a little further, um, because of the, um, safe routes to school.
Yeah, sure, yes.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
But not much farther than, um, Clark Road, but, you know, that's right.
Well, just because I realized I didn't know, when you talk about that project, what its limits were. And my second comment is I was appalled to have a project presented by a company with no name, manufacturing god knows what, impacting the city and requiring what from this community to support it. Um, I'm just.
Well, we, we encourage people to have, uh, preliminary discussions with us, but that's the first preliminary discussion that was so vacant of any important information. And I, I agree with you, that was a hard discussion to have, given so little that we knew about that project, yeah.
I congratulate you for your civility.
I'm trying to.
And next time, we should have more information, that's all.
Correct, yes. Well, it sounded frightening, actually, especially when he said that there are two other sites had been considered, and they reversed somehow. And I thought, oh, good, other communities are also wary, maybe, who knows?
That was more than you should have said.
But thank you.
Thank you.
Hi there, everyone. My name is Jacqueline Hudson. I serve as the Tri-County Development Manager with the Lansing Economic Area Partnership. I'm here tonight just to express both LEAP and the MACC's, um, engagement and support of the project that was earlier presented by Dimaxian. Uh, yes, I was gonna, I was thinking if I should talk earlier today. Um, we do look forward to further community engagement and public presentations as we get more information from the state. So one of the main reasons why, um, this company remains so anonymous and why they've been to a few different locations is because they work with a lot of incentives from each different states and countries. I mean, it's a very, very, very competitive process. Um, and if one person knows the name of the company, they all start going after them, trying to, you know, get them to not invest in your community and invest in a different community. So that's why we are keeping this anonymous at this time. Um, we're hoping in the next thirty to sixty days that we can have some more information. And we just wanted to get, well, I know Dimaxian really wanted to get on the agenda and get the process going, so I completely understand. So I completely understand both the board and the community, you know, hesitancy on that.
Joan represents the community.
Great, great. Well, know that, that there is more conversation coming. And you can always feel free to reach out to us at LEAP, personally, myself, if you have any questions. But of course, at this time, it's, it's pretty anonymous. But soon, I promise, it'll be coming, so.
We wanna know what they can do for us.
Investment, job creation.
I think you're gonna be pleased. I agree, so thank you for your time.
As long as you're here, why isn't the MEDC is so reluctant to work on some way to redevelop the industrial properties that we've already walked away from? Either to change the rules of how it's, it's cleaned up or how it's administrated, or instead of going out in someplace else and developing a, a non-industrial site?
Sure, that's a great question. And, you know, I can't speak for the MEDC directly, I'm with LEAP. But we don't pick the site for the company. The company usually picks the site. We advise and often show some sites, but they do ultimately choose the site. And they're the ones paying for the construction most of the time. Maybe there's incentives in play, but not always. And so they're also running the numbers and sometimes they can't make things work on a brownfield. So that's a little bit of, of the, of the part. And looking at zoning, that's important for all development. We do wanna make sure that zoning goes hand in hand with the development. But sometimes, you know, you get landlocked in the city and you can't, you know, build what you're looking to build there. So we start looking in the outskirts and seeing if we can get creative. And that's why we come in front of the planning commission and we hold meetings and we discuss opportunities kind of as a brainstorming and play.
I suspect that based on the information the board was giving about this, that there's gonna be, at some point, some money requested from the taxpayers to subsidize this development. And I, I kind of wonder if that's the best use of our money as a society when we just walk away from other sites that are contaminated. The motor wheel site is one, the plant two from GM is one. And there's people living in those areas, there's already all the infrastructure there. And yet we wanna go out and spend money and use taxpayer money and even subsidize it in some cases. When it seems like we'd be better off to look at the bigger picture and redevelop, repurpose, let me put it that way, land that we already had was a commercial site.
Sure, I hear you absolutely. And we did actually pitch one of the racer trust sites. Unfortunately, timing too plays a large part in that. So, you know, usually you can turn construction around maybe in a year or two. Sometimes, you know, I'm not positive what the construction timeframe is. But with a contaminated site, it can be a lot longer. And a lot of that is the red tape of not just local, but state government and getting funding for that. So it, it just adds a little bit more of those sticky waters. But I hear you, I'm a large advocate for that. Unfortunately, that's just not the case with this specific project.
I don't see it being done hardly at all. And I don't know, there's, maybe we need to look at the rules of what we're requiring people to do to be able to redevelop a site.
I agree.
Well, it sounds like it's going to, it's going to take state funding for those things to happen. You're not gonna leave it to the market and expect that to happen, right? If the outcome you want, and you can make the argument that there's a public good.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, and so state investment makes sense in those cases, but, you know, leaving it up to the market and that's, it's, it won't happen. And I know that's not what you're suggesting is to leave it up to the market, but it's a bigger project, I guess is what I'm saying.
But I'm also saying, Dan, that lots of times these people come to us and they want a tax abatement for a certain period of time. To subsidize basically the development in a community that's not permanent. Whereas opposed to, should we be spending that taxpayer money to develop a brownfield site so that it is suitable for a new company to come in?
I agree.
And what's the level of remediation that's needed to be able to do that? Is it too extensive to be practical with the given rules we've got?
Well, let me, let me probably leave you with this. If you don't, somebody else will. So if, if Bath Township is not the one that wants to offer an incentive, somewhere in Texas will. Somewhere in Ohio will. Somewhere, you know, and, and if you study Texas or Ohio and you look at their markets, I mean, they're booming like crazy. And because if you give the abatement, and I'm, I'm just using scenario, maybe a little educational purpose here. But if you give this company, let's say, ten, twelve years of abatement, in return, you're getting a lot more money in the next twenty-five, thirty years than you would've gotten without this investment, without giving this abatement. And like I said, if you don't, somebody else will. And that's part of the competitiveness too of why we don't release the name.
I understand that.
Yeah.
But I think your point is well taken, Joan, too, is that, I mean, that process of having insular planning processes is essentially, from a societal perspective, we are throwing money down the drain in that competitive process. We all know, you look at towns that wanna get the Olympics, right? Or towns that want sports teams, right? There's the competitive process and they're essentially sort of washing money down the drain because there is no master planner anywhere that could say, uh, this is where this should go.
Sure.
So, I mean, it's a bigger issue and I know that's exactly what you're saying.
That's a great point. It is a bigger issue. If, if it didn't exist at all, like, that would be one thing, but because it does, it's starting, it's getting a lot of issues, so.
Well, we see so many places where the, the company, when the tax abatement ran out, walked away. Or they didn't even create the jobs that they said they were gonna create to get their tax abatement and yet we don't do any clawback.
So that has changed, actually. You do need to produce, it often, state money comes in increments where you need to provide. So in three years, you said you would have two hundred jobs. Prove to us that you have two hundred jobs and we'll give you this money as kind of like a payback. You stayed for two years, you created this jobs, like you said, we'll give you your money. It's never upfront money just to the company.
But.
And I don't know how much work there is being done with environmental bonds or redevelopment bonds, but these kinds of assurances to communities that if they should fold, that the community has the money to redevelop, to remediate, to.
Absolutely.
And that hasn't been done in the past. And it's probably not done as much as it should be today.
Absolutely, and it's, as we continue to go through the public process and have these conversations, I think that those are all very valid points that I would be happy to have more of that discussion and it's kind of on like a conditional approval type of thing, so.
Thanks for being here.
Yeah, thank you so much for your time.
I do know that to go along with Jekyll's comments, we are not in a unique position. My counterparts in Watertown Township, Dewitt Township, us are all kind of ripe for the picking at this time and are all being approached with opportunities because we are close to the highway, because we are close to the airport, because we are close to things they need to transport their products. We are at this time very valuable to them. And I, and I'm not talking, of course, like the mega site that Eagles being looked at with, but, but, but different. And, and I think better, so. And, and I'm with you because I've looked at the Admiral site that's out in front of Meyer for years and wish that could be cleaned up so that it could become something else. I know that's a small piece of the puzzle, but I, for, my entire time here have thought like, why can't, why can't we clean it up so it can be something else? Because that corridor is hot right now. And it would be, it would be perfect for, it would be perfect for someone.
When you, when you say hot, uh, no. That was the last word that came out of your mouth. When you say, uh, clean up.
Yeah.
That Admiral site, is that why something hasn't happened there?
Mm-hmm, there's tanks in the ground.
Do we have L-U.S.T. there? Lust, leaking underground storage tanks?
I can't confirm that, but I know that it's, please, you, you might have the answer that. Um, I was gonna say that the underground tanks, it's, it's very possible that those conditions exist. And then for someone to come in and start another business would be a, a whole nother remediation process.
Usually the, the owner of the facilities right now, when the leaking occurred, is responsible for the cleanup, so.
Yeah.
George, so that's all from a place in Cooperstown to someone that actually locally kind of owns it, partial owners. And they did do studies on that. I don't know who has the studies, but last I knew it wasn't that contaminated.
Oh, okay.
There was only one part in the back corner that was actually bad, as far as I know from talking to the people that did it. But you do, you have a lot, it's a tank removal and all that.
Oh, very much so.
You have a lot, a lot more expense.
There's probably a lot of liability when you take on a property like that with tanks underground and.
I just wonder if we could get.
It's easier to start from scratch than to.
I mean, that it's in our township, I wonder if we could get some federal help to remediate this site.
Miles and I have discussed it a few times, so.
Uh, my, my act used to work for a stamp out L-U-S-T, that's why.
When you said it, I was like, I didn't know, I didn't know what that was.
Leaking underground storage tanks.
Okay.
That's what they specified it, or they specialized it.
Well, I think personally that any community that's gonna allow a project to come in that has the potential to be hazardous should require a huge bond to, to clean it up if that becomes an issue. Just like we require self-taught people to provide us with a bond.
Or solar.
The problem is is that all those legacy companies are the ones that caused the leakage, you know, that.
Well, then you immediately become not competitive, so it has to be uniform across communities. It has to be state action or it has to be federal.
Federal.
Otherwise Dewitt takes with Bath.
Well, then, then they take the liability too, that they'll have, and they would. Well, I guess if they want you.
I mean, that's the world.
How much liability do you wanna take on?
That's the world we live in right now, right?
Well, yeah, but as a citizen of Bath Township, how much liability do you wanna take on?
I don't disagree that that's a good idea. I'm just saying that Bath doing it alone is, probably doesn't help Bath.
Well, it doesn't hurt Bath.
Because we already have means to say no. And say no without requiring a bond. But if we're really trying to get businesses and we're really serious about that problem, Bath doing it unilaterally is not a great strategic move, I guess is what I'm saying.
In the short term.
Right.
Right.
Put it in the long.
Put it into the long term.
I don't know, I haven't done the analysis to know what those long-term costs are versus the short-term.
Are we at number eleven on the agenda?
We are.
I think so.
Sorry.
We are, I don't know. We are at public comment.
We're still at public comment.
Any additional public comment tonight? All right, so let's go to a report from trustee if we have one.
You do? I have missed you all dearly. You can tell it's spring and summer travel time again, but I'm happy to be back. I've got a bunch of things that the board has done in May and June to share with you. I'll just start reading them off and if you have any questions, feel free to interrupt me. We did end up approving the proposal to have a township attorney attend our meetings to help strengthen our efficiency, which I think has helped. I think at one point or another, each board member has sort of called on the attorney for clarification on something and I think it's allowed the conversation to move more factually and more fast. So I, I think that has been a good investment so far. We asked the good superintendent there to communicate with the drain commissioner that we would prefer his option that he offered to us, that the county transfer the land down by the lake to Bath Township, that we could then use for a trail or anything else, or whatever we wanted to do. But rather than ask for an easement on county land, that we would ask for them to transfer the land and they would keep an easement so they could work on the water control structure. The police department asked us for new car and body cameras and we approved that project. And I think we can all agree that that's really important for both citizen and police officer safety. We approved the road commission contracts for Hawkalo, that subdivision. The projects that we approved earlier this year now have contracts. We contributed some funding to the preservation of the kupla down in the park. It needed some historical construction and we helped contribute to that. The fire department's looking to purchase a new Lucas CPR machine and we approved that. You know, these are the things that save people's lives, so for me, they're real easy yes votes. And for some of these projects, we've been using ARPA funds, for some, we've been using Fund Balance because we have a good chunk of change that we have sitting in the coffers to invest. We approved a new administrative role over at the police department. There'll be an administrative assistant there to help bulk up our staff there. As we talked about not having space, those two administrative staff members are gonna be basically sitting right next to each other, so we're, we're at the max for space. But we really needed some backup over there and additional support as our police get. You know, as our township grows, there's more activity for the police, there's more activity in the courts, there's just more activity in paperwork, so we need some more help to do that. We also then changed the title, the role and the pay for the current admin over there since she would be helping to supervise a new person and taking on some higher level tasks. You all have a copy of the letter that we sent to MEDC, the support letter, for your reference that we talked about tonight. We are having the township and police admin offices closed next week, July third and fourth. Fourth for the holiday, the third staff will be taking their paid time off, but functionally will be shut down. Also, the board of trustees meeting next week has been canceled. I know you all were looking forward to attending that. In good news, we got a, our financial audit presented to us last week. Clean audit, unmodified, one of, I think, five percent of townships in the state that got that. So I continue to congratulate Karen and the staff and past treasurer, current treasurer, everyone who's involved in that. It's a big deal to make sure we have a clean audit. It helps communicate to the public that we are a safe investment of their tax dollars, that we are using it as we have defined. We also approved a, a new member of the housing commission, Casey Hartzuff over there. We may have other appointments there in the future, but for now, that's, that's what we've done. The supervisor asked the board to approve a deputy supervisor position. In the way that she presented it to the board, that has been turned down. But the supervisor maintains sort of constitutional authority by law to name a deputy supervisor that would look differently from the way it was presented to us. So I wanna be really clear, we as a board declined in the way that it was presented to us here. She still maintains her authority to, to name a deputy supervisor as defined by law. We heard the first reading of the home business ordinance, approved that. And then lastly, we approved a work session to be added to the next meeting. Again, not next week, we've canceled that, but the next meeting, the seventeenth. The supervisor has asked us to review the board rules. And so we'll be doing a work session at five o'clock in this room, going over the board rules. If you all have thoughts about the board rules, many of you, if not all of you have been in the audience, many of you have watched it from home. If there are things you think we should change or do better, certainly share them with me or any other board member and we can bring those forward.
Thank you, Ryan. Any questions or comments for Ryan?
What, what action, if any, was taken about the idea of a cooling center?
None. Apparently the request was not to have it be a cooling center. That's the words that were used. And so the superintendent put together a proposal for a cooling center and when presented it, was told that's not actually what folks were looking for. They were looking for a drop-in center. And so my understanding is my colleague trustee Kellerman will be coming forward with a proposal sometime in the future about doing that.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Okay, so second to last, any open comments by planning commission members?
Wish, George. Good to see Miles take a couple minutes off.
I agree.
I don't know if it's Mike, it's gone, but yeah. So that, that was good to see. Thank you, Karen, for being here tonight and Joey and sidekicks. Thank you all for all your hard work and your sidewalks and the rest of what you do behind the scenes.
Other comments?
Thanks for coming, Karen.
You're welcome.
Yeah, we appreciate it.
A pleasure to see you.
I hope to be here more.
Thank you. We get you, we get you early off, it's, it's nice to have you here.
Thank you.
We'll serve refreshments next time.
Oh, I like that.
Ryan and then.
Uh, it's state budget week, so we should know hopefully by the end of the week, or at least early next week, about revenue sharing and we at least have one project that's in a budget to help with some road stuff. about revenue sharing, and we at least have one project that's in a budget to help with some road stuff. So hopefully, all of the Bath Township stuff will be funded. And then last week, the Robin grants for the broadband were tentatively announced, eleven projects across the state. We are now one of them. The proposed projects don't touch Clinton County in any way, so that's a bummer. There's an open comment period, it's one of those things where they propose, this is what we're gonna do, and then citizens can comment, and then they're gonna do what they want to do anyway. But that goes into August, so if you're motivated about us not getting the broadband grant, there is a place for you to put that energy.
Can I? No, no, I'm not a commissioner, I was gonna.
No, I would like to hear.
Oh, I was gonna say, thank you for your agility on the sand and gravel mining. I really appreciate when important issues come up that this group, without hesitation, turns around and acts on something like that and and gets something out the door into our state representatives. I really appreciate that.
That was an easy one, I think.
Yeah.
I just, real quick, I wanted to interject a thought about the Bath Community Center at Park Lake. We've been working with the Park Lake Apartments, you know, right there, and they are preliminarily approved to start that project. The property line for that building, the Park Lake Community Center, goes right along that west, almost, I mean, like this far to the wall. What I would propose is maybe the possibility of having the Park Lake Apartment people who own the property over to the street. There's probably enough land there to double the size of that building. And we have talked, Karen, in the past, and the reason I'm saying this is because Karen's here, but we've talked in the past about the possibilities of increasing the size of that because, you know, we need a community center. And I I just thought, hey, maybe this is the opportune time to approach those Park Lake people, the Park Lake Apartment people, and say, hey, how about if you subdivide this and let us buy that parcel out to the road so that we can maybe increase the size of this? We may be able to pick it up for a song.
Staff has, staff has discussed a boundary adjustment there, and I think we will speak with them when the time is right.
I think right now is, well, I say that, you know, with tongue in cheek, right now is an opportune time. And I just, I just looked at that building and it's been there for so long, you know, since I've been here. And I said, gosh, if we could, you know, improve the size of that, you know, it'd be great.
Or even the parking.
Yeah.
I agree.
Okay, and again, Karen, thank you very much for coming.
You're welcome.
And the last thing I want to say is the probably, about the only thing that I'm trepidatious about in that three hundred and fifty thousand square foot place is the noise. If you guys don't know about it, forges make a lot of noise. There's one seriously giant twenty-ton hammer hitting, boom, boom, boom.
Oh, ground vibration.
Oh, it's unbelievable. And if that's what, you know, that's a large, they may not have that large, and that's why I want to know more about the intricacies. So that's, but you know, prima facie, I'm happy that they came to us.
Thanks, Ray. Other comments? Okay, if there are no objections, then we will adjourn.
None. All those in favor? So is Miles at training or is he on vacation?
No, Miles is on a legitimate vacation.
Oh, no way.
Yes.
He answered his phone the last time I called him when he was on vacation.
Oh, no, 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 no.
I didn't even know, you know, I just called him up because I had a question and he, I mean, one ring and he answered it. He says, yeah, we're in Traverse City, I said, well, I have to answer the phone.
He's on a boat, I hope he doesn't have cell service, he is.
He does, when he goes on vacation, I don't, I don't take his phone. If he does shut it off.
Everybody that age.
Let's go with you. You're coming?
Oh, thank you.